I'd like to call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, September 18th. If the clerk could please call the rule.
Anderson, here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Garger.
Here.
Muncie.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
White.
Here.
You have a form.
All right, any agenda changes or deletions tonight, this afternoon? Any guest speakers? All right, we are on to public comment on agenda items only. If anyone in the audience wishes to come to the podium, speak on agenda items only, please do so. Otherwise, I can turn to online to see if anybody has their hand raised. I don't see anyone. Okay, so we'll move on to our discussion items for this afternoon. Item 6A is our telecommunications discussion. And Ryan, if you want to start things off for us.
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor. So looking back at, you know, past priorities that the City Council has set and some past meeting minutes from the past several years, you know, seeing or saw that telecommunications within the city has been kind of an ongoing, you know, discussion item and priority to make some improvements. And so I think we've, you know, certainly as a city have done some work and made some progress and then realized that there's still some work to do. And I, you know, the council has had some discussion about what's the, you know, best way to approach that going forward. So just as a reminder, it's been concerns about cellular service. So to kind of tackle that, there were some discussions with Verizon, and they installed some small cell towers on a few different locations within the city. And look forward to your feedback today. I don't know that there's been a ton of complaints since they've done that. But if there are still concerns, really would want to hear that. City Council has, you know, approved staff working with AT&amp;T to reuse and repurpose the Mount Bald Head radome to install cellular antenna there to improve AT&amp;T service, as well as provide, you know, good cell coverage at the beach in case of emergency. And so AT&amp;T has been working on that project for several months now, and has been working through the State Historic Preservation Office approvals for that project. Recently reviewed a proposal for Metro Wireless to kind of hit the ground running with Starlink and at least have Wi-Fi calling capability at the beach, so we can have an immediate option to improve safety out there and communication. That agreement is signed. The CVB was a partner in that and paying for the upfront costs. And then Metro Wireless is working on setting a date for installation. And then on top of that, we kind of, you know, also had some discussions about, you know, how do we bring fiber to the city? Should we be looking at public Wi-Fi options? My predecessor had some meetings with various entities, and I've had some recent meetings with Frontier and Comcast who currently provide services to the community. Just today, met with Surf Internet, who's a provider out of Indiana that runs fiber to homes and businesses. They're doing projects in South Haven, soon to be Fenville, Grand Haven. And they have an interest in a project here in Sagatuck. And then we've had some discussions with Metro Wireless and AT&amp;T about Wi-Fi downtown as well. So all that to say that we have a great broadband project manager in Jill Dunham with the county. The county's working on a larger broadband project. Some of you have met, you know, a little bit of feedback here. Okay. Some of you have met Jill, I think, previously, and some of you may not have. And so I thought it would be a good idea to bring Jill in today, kind of give you an update on what is the county doing from a broadband perspective. And then she has many years in the telecommunications industry, and maybe allow her an opportunity to provide you with some insights of how the city should approach improving telecommunications and answer any questions that you may have as a council.
All right. Jill, if you'd like to come to the podium, we certainly are happy that you're here today. We've had a lot of questions over the last couple of months. We've been working on a number of different projects, but hearing from an expert that's not from a particular company, it's really nice to have you here today.
Yep, it is. So I'll just give you a real brief update on what's happening with the county's broadband project. And I'll just kind of recap. So I've been in this position for two and a half years already. That has flown by. Back in 2022, we did an RFP. We had 11 responses. We selected our vendor, 123net, in November of 2022. And then the county very efficiently negotiated that contract and got everything signed just after the first of the year, just in time for the Robin Grant Program. Our county proposal was one of over 100, I think. Yeah, it was over, there's 154 proposals that were submitted. Ours was the third highest scoring. We were the only public-private partnership, you know, of that, you know, size. And our proposal was 500 pages, of which only 30 pages were the answers to the questions. The rest was support from the community, which was just phenomenal. So we were able to get the maximum grant award, and we are in the process of finishing of building that. There are about 12,000 addresses that are in the grant that are unserved addresses. And then there are probably at least another 4,000 that are called incidental passings because you've got, you know, you've got Comcast going down the road. And they serve the people, you know, they're going down the road, and then they go this way, and they serve the people, you know, a little bit over, and then they stop, and then they go the other way, and then they stop. Well, you know, we got to connect people on both sides that aren't served. And so they end up crossing over a Comcast or a spectrum area. So there will be probably another 4,000 people that will be lucky enough to have a choice and be able to order. We are about 35% and pretty much right on track for a two-year project and completion. I think we probably, we are, I think as of last week, we were close to 100 installs, I mean, I'm sorry, 1,000 installs, mostly over on the east side of the state. They did start construction in July in the northwest corner. So that would be Fillmore Township, Over Isle Township. They'll be doing some in Heath, and then Manlyus Township. And then the rest of it is all, there's a big map on our website, and allegancounty.org/broadband is where all the updates are. I try to post an update every two weeks, every two to three weeks, with just some updated stats on where we are with the zones and that kind of thing. So in addition to that, that's our biggest piece of the comprehensive plan. We also have Rural Digital Opportunity Fund grants that were awarded before I started. Those were applied for in 2019, and they were finalized with the FCC in 2021 and 2022, probably about 5,000 residents. Most, half of those are MEC Midwest Energy Cooperative, I think, yeah. And they do, they're a rural electric co-op, and they're doing fiber in addition to electric. And so they actually started construction in Casco and some of Pullman, and they actually moved up the schedule for some of the homes in Cheshire. So they're probably somewhere around 40, 50% done with theirs. And then I did get notified earlier this week that Mercury Broadband is planning to start construction next month. And that's what they were telling me this year, is it would be fourth quarter. But they said that in 2022, and they said that in 2023. So I was highly skeptical. But they told me this week, and now we're only a month out. So I'm trusting that information a lot more. And most of those are all along the southern part of the county. So the portions of Sagatuck Township and the area around here, they are in the final zone for the most part. So and then the other thing is, so and then there's Bloomingdale is doing a project. And so between those people that I mentioned, you know, 123net, MEC, Mercury, Spectrum, and Bloomingdale, that covers the majority of the county. Now, when we were working on this in 2022, the most difficult, nearly impossible task is figuring out who does and doesn't have internet. And the providers, what we did to create the scope for the RFP is we had the providers tell us who they were serving. And they did a, an okay job, but not a 100% accurate job. So but it was close enough that you can't let perfect be the enemy of good, and then you just got to go and start getting it done. So there are somewhere around 500 or 600 addresses scattered about in different places around the county that were claimed to be served by mostly Charter and Spectrum, and then come to find out they don't. And it was, it was due to some things, like they would put a shape file over a fiber route, and you would think that the fiber went, you know, off the main road, but it was really just meant to tell you that the fiber was on the main road. But houses were getting captured in the, in the boundaries of these shape files. So there is a broadband equity access and deployment grant program. This is the money that people have been hearing about since 2021, the bipartisan infrastructure bill. Yet, nobody has got any of that money yet. So the good news is there's lots of economic, you know, opportunity coming from all the jobs that will be created by spending that money that we haven't spent a dime of yet, while we spent administrated. But not any fiber has been put in the ground for that yet. And the money that we are using is from the Robin Program, which is Capital Projects Fund, CP, I guess it's called. And that was part of the appropriation that was part of ARPA. So the ARPA legislation that was done during, as a response to COVID, that was from the Capital Projects Fund. And that is what our, where we got our money to do our project. So the BEAD project should be, Michigan has jumped through all the hoops, and the proposals will be starting to be received very soon. The final thing that we're waiting for is the NTIA to approve our list of eligible addresses. And we have spent most of 2024 working on and going through a process of, you know, publishing in a map and then accepting challenges to the map, and then processing all the challenges to the map to try to get an accurate set of data. And as soon as the NTIA, which is, it's under review with them right now, as soon as they provide that approval of that list, then I'm expecting within days that grant window will open. So the rest of the people, and some of those people are in this, this west coast area, because you find people with long driveways, and the limitations of coax is usually around 250, 300 feet. If their driveway is longer than that, then, you know, they can't push the coax back there. And then it makes it extremely expensive. And so then Comcast says, well, you know, if you want to give us $12,000, and nobody really seems to want to do that. So there's people that are just kind of, you know, nestled in amongst that will be covered by the BEAD program. Because as people call me, I confirm for them that yes, your address is not served. We agree. You will be part of the BEAD process. So that process is going to take 12 months from when the window opens. Then the state, my high office has 12 months to find a solution for every 100% of the eligible addresses, to find a solution for them, and a provider that's going to provide internet to every single address, and an allocation of how the 1.6 billion will be spent. They're actually hoping they'll have a little bit left over to use for equity. But they are fairly comfortable they will have enough. So that is what is happening, you know, kind of for us. And that also applies kind of to the western state, too. So any questions about the broadband project? Yes?
Any guests on the 12,000 underserved? I'm looking at your website right now. It doesn't appear that I could search, you know, by the Sagatuck zip code to see how many, if any, Sagatuck residents are.
In the city?
Yeah.
Virtually none.
Virtually none that are underserved. Okay. That's what I suspected.
I mean, because like the Sagatuck RV park.
Yeah.
There's issues there, but that's in the township.
Right.
So there are people really close to the city that don't have. But I am, yeah, I mean, because we, I mean, I think 123net applied for the Metro Act. And then when it came right down to it, there weren't any addresses here. So, yeah.
That's what I suspected. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah. Yeah, Comcast has pretty much covered. The only area, so I should, I should, I should make a correction and be very precise here. So driving down Park back to Oxbow, the people at Oxbow and the houses that are near Oxbow are not served. And I have been pounding on Comcast, because those addresses were included in the RFP, but they were excluded by the bidders, because it did not make financial sense to build all the way, all the way over to Park, all the way over to Oxbow, when Comcast is right there. And so it was just, you know, like, they just said it was not a good use of money to, for them to build them. So when they saw that there were some addresses that were way deep into the Comcast territory, they just actually made them an exclusion. So, and I am still working on those. And those are funded for BEAD. And I'm expecting that the reason I'm mostly getting stoned on by Comcast is that when there's free money available, you're going to wait for the free money. And so I think they're going to wait for the free money. And I just need to make sure, as soon as we get that final list of eligibles, because there's, there's a lot of mischief in there, because some reports didn't get report, didn't get, the map didn't get updated properly when Comcast did one of their updates. And so there's a bunch of people that are listed in the official broadband draft map that actually have service, and they're not listed as being served. And my high knows they're served, and Comcast knows they're served. And so anyway, that dust has to all settle.
So Jill, can you touch on then, you know, so county's obviously doing, you know, a lot of great work in bringing internet access to everybody. But Sagatuck, you know, fortunate we have connectivity.
Yeah.
We want the fiber, like everybody else is getting. But can you talk about some of the challenges and bringing fiber? And, you know, how, from your perspective, how does the city approach that? And what's our best chance of bringing fiber, I guess, to the city?
Well, I did connect Ryan with my contact, Todd, at Frontier. And as he mentioned to you, Surf has had reached out to me and was really interested in overbuilding. And there are smaller, smaller operators like Surf that are interested in overbuilding coax, because they know that people are going to like that product better. And it's, it's the next layer. I mean, the advantage for them is it's usually where there's coax service through a Comcast or a Charter, the density is better. So they can, they can get a better return. And so I had hoped that maybe Frontier would want to prioritize Sagatuck, because they, you know, they operate the western two-thirds of the county, although like the line between them and AT&amp;T kind of goes just under Holland. It goes between Sagatuck and Holland. And so Holland is AT&amp;T, but then somewhere between Holland and Sagatuck, it changes to Frontier, and you all have Frontier. And then it goes around, and it goes between Hopkins and Alleghan, and it goes west of Otsego. So like two-thirds of the county is Frontier, and then the rest of those people have AT&amp;T. My expectation is that Frontier, once all this fiber gets built by 123net and the other ArdoF-funded grants, they, if I was them, I would be aggressively getting people to disconnect their copper phone lines and petitioning, you know, the FCC to just abandon the infrastructure. It's, it's killing the company, the amount of revenue they get and the amount of money they have to spend to maintain that infrastructure is, is just, it's a, it's a losing proposition. But if they do just abandon all of that rural infrastructure and just focus on the cities, I mean, all this, all this copper phone lines has to be replaced. It's 70s technology. So 60s and 70s. So it needs to be replaced with fiber. But how fast they're going to do that, and what their priorities are, you know, they aren't really answering that question. And I stuck Ryan on them to see if he could get them to answer, and he got the same vague answer. But, you know, I thought maybe having Todd meet with Ryan, maybe, you know, Todd would see some opportunity, or maybe going to go advocate. It doesn't, doesn't sound like that happened. And it would be really smart of Frontier to do that. Because if they let Surf or somebody else come in and put the fiber in here, that is just going to be their death now. I mean, they're, they're in the dust.
That's the conversation that I have with Frontier. Like, well, there's some competitors that are interested. And I think, you know, the message I got from Frontier is that you as customers, if you want it, if more people that are going on their website and just plugging in their interest in fiber on their website and saying, hey, we want you to bring fiber here to our community, it's going to make them, you know, more interested. And you show me some of their maps that they do have some fiber that's in the area. And so like businesses, for example, could reach out to their sales folks, and they can run fiber lines to businesses downtown. Obviously, there's a cost to that. But they are willing to kind of connect those business customers. But.
And this is through Frontier or Surf?
This is Frontier. This is Frontier. So I had that conversation with them. I had a meeting with Comcast who kind of explained their approach and model, which they're maybe not necessarily going to take the full fiber routes everywhere, unless you have like certain like manufacturing centers, or, you know, denser populations. They're working on this Gemini project over the next few years that will kind of bring fiber to a certain point, and then using their existing technology to kind of speed up existing service that, from their perspective, will still be great and what you desire and what you need if you're at a basic home level. And so I just met with them today. So they're going to see if they can get an estimated timeline, but they're kind of holding their cards close on that, to where a lot of their staff don't know. And then, and then I'll let you talk about Surf net as well. But.
Yeah. So we met with Surf today. They are doing South Haven, and they didn't ask to save South Haven for any money. And that's their intended way to go about it. There are some environmental challenges with the tribal and the additional requirements. Like, it sounded to them, as they started researching this territory, that they might need to have somebody dedicated working with their crews full-time during the whole build, which is a big expense. And so they were making noises today that they might need, when they figure out what their costs are, and, you know, they have a certain return on investment, they, they might be short, you know, like it might not meet the investment, and they might need some money. I wouldn't, I don't think it's worth it to invest in it, honestly, because I think that what you have today is meeting the need. You know, some people that are in residence have a need for a higher upload speed, but they're few and far between. I mean, I work at, out of my home, and I have 300 meg up, and I have, or I have 300 meg down, and 11 meg up, and I can do everything I need to do. And of course, streaming, any kind of TV or any kind of entertainment, it's all really, pretty much is down. So you're going to find that you're, the average person is going to be totally fine with the Comcast service. It's not really, it's just not, you know, hopefully, at some point, somebody will decide to invest in the fiber. It's, it's an attractive thing. This is an attractive community. I think, you know, you'll be able to find somebody, you know, sooner than later. And Frontier can run fiber to a business that actually needs fiber, you know, and Comcast can, you know, they will, they will figure out what they have to do to put it in. But, you know, a business customer is paying sometimes 500, $800 a month. A residential customer is paying 75 to 90. So like, they can't get the return on the residential, but they can make the investments for the technology upgrades for the businesses. And, I mean, if I look at, you don't have like any major, I mean, most of your business is retail. Most of your retailers just need to be able to connect their credit card machine to the internet, which is, you can do that with any kind of home residential. You don't need a business grade for the most part. So I don't, I don't even see like a, I'm not saying that there aren't some businesses in Sagatuck that need it, but I don't think there's an overwhelming number. I think, you know.
I think what a lot of our businesses are finding is when there's 10,000 people in town in the summertime, using the restaurant systems that we use in our restaurants, that sometimes that gets bogged down, and it, we can't take credit cards when there's so many people in town. So you're, you're saying that a business, if they wanted to, they could have fiber run, and that, that would be like a hard connection.
Right.
And they wouldn't, maybe they would have better service in that way.
And they would, they would, you know, and it would be a business class service. So it would be a much more costly service. Now, one of the things that I've been talking to Paul over in Douglas, on the Douglas City Council, he and I talked last week, I think it was, or maybe it was two weeks ago, I can't remember. And when I was talking to him, and I've been talking about this, you know, because I had talked to the other Ryan before, and we have, we had talked about, you know, Wi-Fi for the business district. And I did run it by my AT&amp;T contacts. You know, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not an expert on municipal governments and towns, you know, your size or bigger, that, you know, and we do know that there are communities where, you know, public Wi-Fi is offered. At Holland, they're going to, they did a millage to get fiber for every resident, you know, in the city of Holland. So there are, I know there are things happening. I am not an expert on that. I have not researched it. I don't have any information about that. But I don't think it's being done for free for the most part. But then I got to thinking that, so here are my thoughts about a Wi-Fi. Number one, you don't want to own it. You don't want to operate it. You do not want to own it. You want to contract with somebody, and they will own it, and they will operate it, and you will pay them to do that, because that's their area of expertise. Because those, you know, you need to have a company that can, you know, fix things when they're broken and maintain the service, you know, the KPIs, the performance indicators, you know. And you want to have that written into your contract so that they are legally obligated to provide whatever, you know, you come to as what, you know, what the key performance indicators are. But you want to have a company that that's the whole reason they exist is to do that kind of stuff. And then you also want to build into it, you know, upgrades, because technology gets outdated very quickly. And so if it's a company that's in that business, they're going to be much better positioned to be able to do those upgrades. And that's another thing. I think what, what I think, what, if I was in your shoes, I think what I would pursue is an RFP for a Wi-Fi network. And I would team up with Douglas. You know, you each have your own city, but kind of like, just do it kind of as a team, you know, and, and get a proposal. And, you know, I think it would probably make sense to pick the same person and kind of do it as a joint effort. Because then you've got that economy of scale, which allows it to be more affordable for that company to either, you know, have a dedicated resource in this area, or, you know, you've got, you've got that whole thing that makes it just more, more affordable for them to do it. I think that if you had, now, I know they have the small subs for Verizon. And my frame of reference on this, as I think about it, when I worked for AT&amp;T, we used to put in those distributed antenna systems in stadiums, like, you know, the Big House and Spartan Stadium. They would put, come in, and, and the cell carriers would do this. But you don't, you don't want cell carriers, because there's, you know, at least three major cell carriers that would have to replicate the same thing. That's silly. What you want is something like that, but you want it to be a Wi-Fi network. You want it to be like, like an Intranet, you know, like you have, you probably have Wi-Fi at City Hall, right? But you just want it to be the whole city, not just this building, right? So, and when they did those, you know, big stadiums, they would put distributed antennas all around and make like a mesh network, where, you know, you've got like complete coverage. If you did that, and you made that available to your residents and your guests, that takes all the stress off the towers. Because now people are connecting to that network. And now you're going to want it to be somewhat secure, but public networks are never 100% secure. But you'd want, that'd be a consideration, you know. But, and you could also sell capacity on that network to businesses. You could have like a public Wi-Fi that has less security. And then there's probably ways to do like VPN tunnels and different security things, so that, you know, your businesses could, could purchase, you know, the use of it. And I was even, so, you know, there's, you could just absorb it in your budget. But the other thing is, is that if you feel like you've got, and this is one of those, you know this, this is what you do as council members. But if you really feel like, in order to do it right and do it well, that you really don't want to have to dig into your current revenue, I think you could sell a millage, you know. And you could probably pull Sagatuck Township into it, because, you know, my example is, I live. You know, and you could probably pull Sagetuck Township into it because, you know, my example is I live in Gunplain Township. I live north of the city limits, but just north and Gunplain gives some tax money to the city of Plainwell to maintain their parks. Because we don't have any parks in the township, but they have parks and we use them because that's our town, you know, same thing with Sagetuck. They don't live in the city, but this is their city, you know, like they have a vested interest in this place, you know. So I think you could even, you know, start a discussion with them about if we just did. A point, I don't know, I don't know, point one mil, I mean, like, I don't think it's very much, you know? And if you don't think you need to do it, great, but I think if you had to try to. If you felt like it would be better to raise the revenue instead of just taking out of your existing revenue, I really feel like that would be a pretty easy sell. Um, yeah.
To clarify something because it was kind of an eye opener for me when you said it, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. If we had a free Wi-Fi network in the city of Sagetuck, do you believe that it would actually reduce the stress on the cell system?
Absolutely.
So the things that the mayor just mentioned about their point of sales.
Mm-hmm.
Getting jammed because everybody's using this, using cellular connections to gather data.
Mm-hmm.
It would reduce that load.
Well, and the other thing is too, if you think about it, so to run fiber to every business, you know. That is just a very physical thing, but if you create a Wi-Fi, a very robust Wi-Fi network. And you, you know, and you have, you know, Frontier Comcast, whoever bring a large pipe into the head end. Now you can sell people internet. You could sell businesses private internet. And it would be like, you know, they would connect to it and then you can set up the security to make it, you know, secure and VPN and stuff like that. And they can, you could, they can tap into this big pipe and you buy a big pipe, you know, a hundred, a hundred megabit pipe, you know, a gigabit. Well, not a hundred, a hundred gigabit pipe, you know, I mean, like a big pipe that would feed this mesh Wi-Fi network. And then you can just make, you know, part of it a public free Wi-Fi that anybody can connect to. Um, and you can even make it without a password. I mean, you know, you just have to, you know, look for the Wi-Fi and, you know, and so you can. You can find little ways, cute ways to advertise or posters and, you know, and you would want to make a big deal about this because this would be a huge asset. You know, anybody who can, you know, just come here and then just, you know, be able to connect and especially for people who come here all the time. Because people come here year after year after year and for them to like find out, oh, my gosh, you solved the internet problem. They're pretty excited. So, um, but I think you also have that ability, if you're running this network to, you know, sell private connections to it. To businesses. Um, and like I said, I, I don't think you want to own the equipment, but it's still your network. You're just paying somebody to install it, maintain it, you know, provision it, care for it. Um, your outs, your security for it. Yeah, you would outsource the providing of it, but it's still, you would still own the network. You just wouldn't. Hurt, you know, you wouldn't have your own employees maintaining it. You would have the professionals. But I think there's a lot of, I think it's, and it might not cost that much either. I don't know. Russ, go ahead.
Yeah, Jill, this is exciting. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Much of what you said today is things I've been thinking about and actually suggesting to council in the form of a telecommunications strategy, which is imperative for the city. And I think this is also, as you mentioned, everything you walked through exactly the things that have gone through my mind. I've even reached out to a fellow council member in Douglas who's interested in having a conversation about a joint effort. The interest is there. The problem definition is not quite there yet. We need to come up with a strategy to solve the problems that we think that we have, and some of them are pretty evident.
Yeah.
Um, so the collaboration and the fact is, is that um, no disrespect against anybody in the process here, but this is where we need professional help. And meaning someone who's, and you obviously have professional experience with this. But there's probably, who else out there would be say, if I were you, here's who I would call to get a conversation started because I don't think we're ready to write RFP until we quite know what we need. And that's a very involved process. I am completely on board with where you're going with this and this conversation has gotten me very excited about where I think Sagetuck should go. This is a very strategic discussion. And um, where do you get started? Who do you start with?
I can do some research on that for you.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. That would, that would be helpful because as council members have said, even at last night's forum, when we need help and expert help, we bring them in.
Yeah.
And this is a situation where I really believe we need that. No disrespect against the manager. We've had breakfast and he said, we're not telecommunications experts. Let's bring that person or.
Right.
In to get us started on that conversation. The interest is here.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and.
I can definitely network that. I've got a lot of contacts in the industry and um, I can definitely come up with some suggestions.
This is super exciting.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think in that regard even, um. You know, you're going to want to interview multiple companies, you know, and uh, talk to them about, you know, what what they've done in other cities, you know, what they. You know, to to give you their resume, you know, and their portfolio, what they've done and then, you know, pick the one you think will will do the best. And then, then that person can be your, you know, your consultant. And then I do think. I think until you quantify what, well, first you have to quantify what you need. I think you need a lot of input and it needs to be, you know, like a survey so you can come, you know, get the same, ask the same questions. And I think, you know, the businesses for sure, getting their input on what their pain points are and understanding, you know, what they need, what they don't have. You know, that kind of thing. And then, um. And I think I would probably focus it just on the business district, but your business district does extend, I think, out onto Blue Star. That might be a little bit of a stretch to make the Wi-Fi go there. So maybe you don't do that, maybe just to put the central business district. But you will have to kind of, you know, with input from, you know, the residents and input from the businesses, you know, determine what the boundary is. Because that will be a key determinant. And then, um. And then working with your consultant, then you want to go out for an RFP because there's lots of people that would. You know, be able to do something like this and you want to go out for an RFP and get, you know, several bids. And, you know, and get the best price in the best company that's going. And I, I also would encourage you to do it long term. Because, you know, if you give a company a three, three-year contract. Um, it's just harder for them to really, you know, i- if you do a long-term contract, then you. You can build a relationship and it's a partnership. And I think it would be, you'll be better served by that because it it's, it's difficult as a business owner. To be, you know, kind of trying to operate within what you know you're going to get. And I think people do a better job when it's a long-term partnership. So I would encourage a longer term.
Yeah, yeah, I would just add that uh, my father's eighty-five, soon to be eighty-six, lives up in the city of Holland. And when they first, I don't know if he voted yes on the bond proposal or not for their, for for financing it. I never, I haven't asked him to vote a yes or no, but. He said, when they're, he got a letter from the city about fiber optic. He called me up. He said, what is this? I said, data is the speed of light. That's what you want. He says, can I ditch Xfinity and dump and dump my box and then get a, get a service for half the amount and faster speed? I said, yes, you probably can. Sold.
Yeah.
He says, well, will my Alexa work? I said, yes, it will. Will my smart TV work? Yes, it will. So my dad, who is technologically, doesn't consider himself to be advanced. Clues into this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And he's just one example in my own sphere of just, this is where we need to go. And whether we can make it happen like Holland happened, probably not, because that's a, that's a pretty big undertaking that they've got, however.
You're a lot smaller than them. It almost makes it easier to do it. You know, you're small, you're compact. I mean, now it.
And nothing I guess extended.
Now that you're saying, now that you're talking about that, I'm like, that's true because almost, you know, Linden Township did this in Washtenaw County. And uh, when you have municipal, you know, internet, it is cheaper considerably. Because, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a utility. It's a, you know, it's a service that the, you know, and and, and you can definitely do it cheaper. Um, and so, um. Yeah, I mean, it it would, it would be worth keeping it in the conversation.
A lot of solutions here, but probably definitely some help.
And then, and then, you know, then you look at a thing like what Surf is saying. Um, maybe, maybe you do say, okay, you want, you know, five hundred thousand dollars? Okay, we want forty dollars a month, you know? Hey, you know, your taxpayers' dollars are, you know, like, what's, what am I going to get out of this? So, um, you know, it would definitely be, you know, worth, you know, talking about. Um, and uh, and if you could, if you could negotiate a nice reasonable rate for your residents. Um, it could be worth, you know, making the investment. And then that's where. You know, it really should, you really should be considering both things because that's another, you know, that's another thing where you'd probably want a millage for it. But it would be a really, for, you know, I think if you, well, if you did it, you wouldn't do it if it wasn't going to be a good deal for the residents, right? You wouldn't give them a bad deal to vote on. So, you know, if you do ask for uh, money, you're going to give them more value than they're getting, or you wouldn't even bother to do it.
Yeah, um, so just to follow up on the earlier comments regarding ARPA and BEAD. So Sagetuck's in the same position it's going to be in probably for eternity now, and it's been for a number of years. We're just too financially well off to be in those buckets of need.
No, it's only just because you have it serviced.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, you know, Little Martin, Little Hopkins, they aren't in it either. Because if you have service, that's really, it has nothing to do with the affluence of the community. It really has to do with the fact that you have. High-speed internet available to you.
Yeah, because that would be the question is, why are we not tapping in? Because people hear those numbers in the press, right? At one point, well, how many ever billion? Why are we not tapping into that?
Yeah, well, that money is is dedicated to building the infrastructure where it doesn't exist. And building the infrastructure is extremely expensive, uh, and you just don't have, in the low-density areas, you don't have the revenue that would ever pay. You know, back in any kind of a reasonable timeframe that a business would be considered acceptable.
Glad you're here today, Jill. Thank you. This has been very thought-provoking.
So, and I did talk to AT&amp;T about the cell tower and, yeah, I get the same answer. Um, is that the shipo is really uh, where everything's gotten snerved up, so. Yep, um, but that will be a really good uh, solution for the cellphone. Um, because that tower is nice and high and it will reach both the beach and the town and it will make a huge difference. Um, so hopefully we can get it finished.
Yeah.
Because it's been two and a half years, not a few months.
Yes.
Just that too, you know, Jill was very reaffirming and I told her about our old beach uh, work with Starlink. Unless you have fiber, that's like the next best option.
I would definitely say Starlink is the next best. Um, when people call me and they're like, I can't, I'm not going to get internet till next year. What do I do? Or, you know, people are buying a house or building a new house and um, Starlink, if you can afford it. Uh, is the most, it's the only downside is is that it does tend to be a little bit finicky, like sometimes it'll be really fast and great. And then every once in a while, it'll just kind of be not so great. Um, but it's probably, you know, good speed most of the time. Uh, minimal, minimal slow uh, periods. Um, and then, you know, the next best thing is is a, uh, like a Verizon MiFi hotspot. Which is not good at all, but it's way better than Houston.
So like Starlink on our beach is probably, it was the next best thing.
Thing you can do um, without having, you know, actual fiber.
Yeah.
Great to know. And the fact that the tower is the best place to put an AT&amp;T antenna.
Yeah, yeah. So good.
All right, Jill, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions before she leaves?
No, that's wonderful. Thank you for showing us the website.
Yeah.
I know, uh, we'll probably follow along and see how uh, how the broadband gets back to us. Where now, it's not going to be you, the program ends here, the twelve twenty-five, that's the end of the.
Yeah, December, my, my role is, yeah, that's what we're expecting. And and at this point, I was originally brought on board and we were talking three years. Because when I came on, we had no idea what we were doing, how we were doing it, how much it was going to cost. We knew nothing. Um, now that we know, um, it's going to be, so I would have been done next February, that would have been three years, but I'm going to be going all the way through twenty twenty-five. To to see the construction to its completion and making sure everybody's got a, a solution. So, and it's going to be exciting. And, you know, the other thing um, is that. We are at the cutting edge of this whole thing because no other big rural area like us. Uh, really did a big project like we're doing. And so Alleghen County is getting the money and we'll be all done before, they won't start construction on any of the BEAD until twenty twenty-six. And so we will be all done and Alleghen County, as y'all know, is beautiful and desirable and we're going to see some explosive growth. And so, um, I've been stressing this for the last two and a half years to the townships. Make sure you have a good plan. Make sure you have good zoning. Make sure you are. Because it's coming. I'm telling you, the tidal wave is coming and you better have your ducks in a row and your zoning plans right because the pressure is going to be immense. And, you know, you want to control how your community grows to the best you can.
Awesome. All right, Jill, thank you so much. Appreciate it so much. All right, we'll move on to our other discussion items. Six B, the sign replacement request from the city of the village of Douglas. Uh, it is on page four. Not much to say about that. Luke, did you want to come on up? There's not a whole lot to say about it.
There's not much.
Hello.
Hi, Luke.
Yes, the, the city of the village of Douglas have applied to replace their wayfinding sign at the intersection of uh, Lake Street and Blue Star. Because obviously it's city right of way, it requires your approval and a uh, signed revocable license agreement. Uh, the license agreement is drafted and ready to go. Tonight, it's in front of you just as a discussion topic to see if you had any questions or concerns. But again, um, yeah, there's really not much to it. There's a sign there currently and they want to make it look nicer because they have a very nice new logo and it'll match that.
It looks great. Yeah. Anybody have any discussion?
The only thing I would add, I, I mean, it's one of those signs where you drive by it all the time, you never look at it.
I know.
And I've never looked, really even, but now that I look at, yeah, I've seen the sign a thousand times. Um, I wonder how old it is in two, is it's probably on its way to the history center, would I assume?
I don't think it's actually that old.
Really?
Uh, no, it's made to look old. It's not authentic. I know, because I just remember it going up not that long ago, so.
I can, I will ask Jenny over it. She's the, the project manager. I'll, I'll see just how old it is and see what they plan. Yeah, it's probably, my guess is that it's going up in someone's office, probably.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to chain themselves to this.
Definitely not. All right, Luke, and do you guys have any questions?
No, I love their no wayfinding.
Yeah, I do too.
All right, Luke, thank you. All right, moving on to uh, discussion succeed, no wake zone request for Kalamazoo Lake. Uh, Ryan, if you want to explain a little bit about this.
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor. So um, Rick Lang with, uh, is on the, uh, the board for uh, Sergeant Marina and and they have uh, some various concerns. About the amount of wake that's uh, been created in Kalamazoo Lake and uh, especially with new like, you know, larger boats and uh, you know, now the wake boats that are out there and and how it's impacting their. Um, boats uh, that are docked at Sergeant Marina. And so they've submitted a formal request that the city. Uh, uh, you know, consider going through the process uh, to uh, enact a uh, no wake zone, which is uh, under the state law, uh, considered a local water craft control. So uh, there's quite a bit of process uh, involved with this. Um, this involves, well. We can only uh, kind of go through this process for uh, our jurisdiction. Uh, you know, obviously the lake is also within the city of the village of Douglas. And and so I advise Mr. Lane that that he would need to submit a similar request to them and they would have to go through a very similar process. Uh, perhaps, you know, parallel, um, but obviously there's there's different differing, uh, different governing bodies here, uh, that can make different considerations. So if the council's interested in, um, you know, pursuing a potential no wake zone here, um, the process would involve. Um, uh, basically drafting a resolution to ask the Department of Natural Resources to to study and and basically advise whether or not. Uh, they'd be willing to approve and and provide you with a local ordinance to adopt uh, a no wake zone here in Kalamazoo Lake. Um, so that that resolution would be drafted. We would then have to schedule a public hearing that would be separate from any other meeting that you have and have it dedicated to this purpose, take public comment. Uh, and then you would then deliberate on whether or not you wanted to pass that resolution and send it off to the Department of Natural Resources. From there, the Department of Natural Resources can do some study. Um, they'll hold another public hearing, uh, and then they'll either uh, deny it. Uh, provide us with some reasons on why they're denying the request, or they will provide a um. An ordinance uh, for you to then uh, adopt if you want to uh, enact the, the no wake zone within the city itself. Um, like I said, Douglas would have to go through a, a very similar process. I think I'll, I'll leave it there. And if it's all right, Madam Mayor, maybe let Mr. Lang just kind of explain uh, some of their concerns of what brought this about and.
Please, come on up. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I've been an owner at Sergeant Scream for about fifteen years. And I live in South Haven and kept the boat in there and then got the opportunity to own as opposed to renting came available. And then the opportunity to own as opposed to renting came available there. So we bought the slip and so we've been there for about 15 years. During that 15-year period, the wake issue has always been a problem, that we've lived with it. And we noticed in the last three, maybe even the five years, more boats, faster boats, more activity and much more wake. In front of our marina, and I'm talking, I'm talking about myself, but I'm also talking about representing Sergeant's Marine. There's a, there is a, we have a thing right in front where the fuel dock is and then on two sides. It's really a poor, the way they do it, because we get hit from three sides rather than having them straight. But that's the way it is. We've had such, probably two years, three years ago, it's been, those markers don't mean anything now. I mean, they, it doesn't, we get waves, wakes that go up as much as three feet, in some cases more. Sweet boats that go as fast as 50 miles an hour, some cases more. Back, and back in August, we had a more than a 30-foot boat pulling. What we're doing, had a tube where people were, which was dangerous because it would have 50 mile an hour. Somebody fell off that, you and they wouldn't see it. It lasted for three hours where we, our boat, we've got a 40-foot boat where it was going back 25 degrees. We had things on top of our, fortunately they were closed, on top of our counters where they actually fell off. We had drawers, we usually, when we're underway, we make sure they don't open, but you don't worry about that when we're sitting at a dock. But they're all open. We almost fell down a few times, not seeing it, not recognizing it was coming in. I get on the bow of my boat and try to clean it and I was lucky, I fell down one time. Fortunately, I fell on the boat rather than overboard. So what we decided that this is too much. I've been cruising the lake, up and down. We've seen just about every harbor that we go into, whether the difference in the size, where they've had some restriction if they're bigger, to no wake. If it's similar size, here we, here we got here. I mean, like Frankfurt, I mean, all the ones where you just have to go slow. Some of these boats that come out here, they don't, we're not, they're going fast, turn around, go fast. I understand they're trying to have fun, but it's dangerous. We're not trying to debate who's having the most fun. It's not about that, it's about safety. And when you're at a, I guess you'd call a lake, I just think it's a wide river. You just, we can't have 50 miles an hour. It affects our safety, our potential for damage. And we're just here to have it stop and make more sense. Because if you look at similar harbors that have similar size water, they're all no wake. If you go larger, they have a restriction. And for instance, like Whitehall, it's a huge lake, but any boat that's over 40 feet, that can't draw wake. Same thing, but a lot of them that size, even Holland. So you get into the other ones that are small, there's absolutely no wake. It's just for safety. Now, I know that Singapore Yacht Club and then across the way Tower, they feel the same way and they would go to a different city to make that appeal. We're only, we're coming to Sagatuck because our ownership is in Sagatuck. Our taxes paid to Sagatuck. And if you look at, it's a condominium and it should, it looks the same as if you had a resident up the street. You have slower. You don't allow 70 mile an hour streets and up there, you have a safe speed limit. To protect, in case there's a fire. I mean, it's all part of what we pay to be part of this area. And so we're now, they can request that Kalamazoo Lake, which we think is nothing more than a big river, that the wake has to be stopped and safe wake has to occur. And we're actually taking this very serious.
Okay.
So if we get pushed around, we will be taken at a different level.
Yeah, so what, what our position is, is that, you know, we obviously want to hear from the Douglas side as well. But as a council, we have to decide whether we want to take it to the next level to have a public hearing about it. And that's what we're here for tonight, to hear from you, but then to hear from council to decide if this is something we want to pursue and have a public hearing about.
I just, can I ask you, sir, what do you mean by being pushed around and taking it to the next level? What do you, what do you mean by that? I don't understand.
Being pushed around?
Yeah, and then taking it to the next level. I don't understand what you mean by that.
Well, I mean, we're here hoping that because we're taxpayers, we have risk of damage, that Sagatuck looks at this and says, yeah, this, this needs to be covered. If this cut the door on us, that makes us go down a different road.
Well, thankfully, we're.
What road is that?
Yeah, at this point, this is just open discussion, so we haven't made a decision about any of it. That's what we're here for tonight.
Right.
Is to make a decision about taking it.
I just want to know that. I'm not, we're not here trying to think, okay, you guys are out there going 50 miles an hour and we're sitting here being banged around. It's not imagined, who's having the fun?
We understand.
Who's having the fun? It's about safety.
Yeah, and does anybody have any questions about it as we're, as we're sitting here? Holly, go ahead.
Who would oppose, I mean, what would the opposition to this be?
The only opposition that I can think of honestly, aren't people in Sagatuck. There probably may be people up in the township that want to get to their homes in Silver Lake. But to be honest with you, I think the surrounding areas, people who have homes along there would probably like a no wake. The businesses around that area would probably like a no wake zone. And certainly the marinas would like a no wake zone in that area. So that's just my opinion and I have more opinions than that, but yeah.
You're on the water all the time. And so you see it, you see it, you see it all the time. And I just, I don't know the rules, I just have friends that have boats, okay? But we don't go 50 miles an hour here. We pretty much go no wake because we're on our way to, we're on our way to the red dock. But if someone's going in the harbor and they're, and they're, like you said, they're going back and forth 50 miles an hour. I can imagine what that could do to a boat. But isn't that reckless? Isn't that reckless behavior? If, if, if you see people out there.
So right now, within the boundaries, they're allowed to go fast, within the boundaries. Unfortunately, those waves carry beyond the boundaries.
Right.
And.
Isn't it so reckless? I mean, if, like you said, there's people going back and forth.
That leads to my question for Ryan is, what does Alleghen County Sheriff, who was in charge of patrolling that water, what's their view on this? Do we know?
Except we're just not at to that, that level yet.
I'd like to hear that too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so as far as.
You're supposed to them, the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, that would all be part of a process that we would consider all that input and through, you know, a public hearing process. I think, you know, Councilmember Muncy's, you know, correct in the sense that, you know, any boat, regardless if it's, if it's an area that you can exceed slow and awake, you're still responsible for your wake. So you have to be responsible with your boat. And if you're creating a wake that ends up, you know, harming somebody or damaging property, that, you know, that owner of that boat ultimately is still responsible for it.
The markers that we have in front of us, they've been there for years and they're, I tried to find out exactly what that means, but if there's supposed to be no wake inside those markers. Those wake, those markers are just a waste of time. Because if you have a boat that's out there in the middle that's throwing a three-foot wake, it comes past that marker and into our marina.
You know, my opinion is it's certainly worth putting out to the public and having a public hearing on it. It's been with the Harbor Authority for years. The Harbor Authority has, you know, basically had it in front of them for a long time. With the water levels going up and down, there's been different urgency behind it, especially at the fuel dock. You know, when the water levels were really high, that was really challenging for the fuel dock. As you, you're getting the waves and there's, you know, there's spillage that can happen when you're doing that. But low water levels versus high water levels, I still think we're dealing with a problem when the boats are going fast in the harbor.
We had one where we had finally had a call of the sheriff and they happened to be there.
Yeah.
And I called them and I told them about the boat that was out there. We couldn't yell at them, I mean, they just went around.
Yeah.
This is about a 35-foot boat.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we, we had to get off the boat, it was that bad.
And when was that this summer, huh?
And did you say you ended up calling the Sheriff's Department about that?
I called the sheriff and I told them what was going on. I said, they're not inside the marker, but they're, we're having wakes that are causing our boat to go up at that time, 25 degrees.
Wow.
It was three hours.
Yeah.
Now, he came in and I called on channel 16, I don't know if you guys are familiar with. I call on 16 because that's how, I figured out that's what they were listening. He responded and soon as I called the sheriff, the guy quit. So he heard me call him. So he just went around real slow for a while. The sheriff came in slowly and they said they reasoned they came in slowly, figured they might be able to catch him. Then he came up and he tied on our fuel dock and he was there for half hour. Finally, the guy decided to give up. So here's the deal, even though he was making the boundaries away from our markers, we can still call if wake comes in, no matter where they're doing it from, if we want to do it and if they're available to do it.
So from here, Ryan, this is obviously a workshop where we have room to ask questions and everything else. If we want to take it to the next level, would that be on the next agenda for Monday? Or would you like more time to? I was just, can I just ask, Ryan?
So staff would have to prepare the, you know, the resolution for consideration and then actually notice a public hearing and schedule a separate meeting dedicated to that. So that would, that would take some time.
Okay.
And, you know, certainly in the meantime, I think we'd want to know that he, you know, if a request has been sent to the city of the village of Douglas, you know, how they're responding. Certainly you would probably want that information at least considered at a, at a public hearing. If we're looking at a portion of the lake, the entire lake. You know, as you indicated, this is something that went to the Harbor Authority Board, you know, some time ago, my understanding and talking with the township managers that, you know, there was a subcommittee that was kind of established and then, you know, not, not much went from there. And so they've kind of been given an opportunity to at least weigh in. It's ultimately under, you know, your authority and whether or not to make this request officially to the DNR for the portions of, you know, within the city's jurisdiction, but.
Yeah, I would want to know what Douglas has to say, obviously, what the Sheriff's Department has to say.
The other, obviously, we're a huge boating community. I would want to, wonder if we could reach out to the various yacht clubs and whatnot and ask for kind of a more formal response from their boards? And say like, what is the position of Sagatuck Yacht Club on this?
And Russ, you're on the board with.
Tower Marine, yeah, all those groups.
Yeah, Vice Commodore of the Yacht Club and we have a meeting coming up this week. And I'm happy to ask the board just informally what their thought process might be.
Exactly, and so if we could get that kind of data, I feel like that could make this a really quick decision or it needs to go more, you know? I don't know, you know?
Yeah.
I, I wrote a letter to you guys.
Yes, we did.
And I emailed to follow up on it. I'm sorry if my Comcast thing was having issues.
That's fine.
We're talking to you guys because we live in Sagatuck. We know there's others that have to be involved in order to go through all this, but we had to start with the owners. We pay our taxes to you guys.
Yeah.
To talk to somebody else, we're just going to talk to them.
Yeah, you're in the right place. You're in the right place.
We're starting out with you guys and then we just, I think you understand what the next step has to be and the other people that are involved, that either Douglas or, or the county, it's going to take plus the state.
Yeah, I think.
If anybody ever was thinking how dangerous.
Yeah.
I mean, we have on our side, we got 50 boats owners. Now, Singapore Yacht Club has got 50. And then you go across to, I mean, there's over 100 there. So we're talking a couple hundred.
Absolutely.
More boats that have an issue.
Well, I think we're all in a green, agreement that we want to solicit some feedback from the various groups.
We don't want boaters.
No, we definitely, yeah.
Oh, right, definitely.
We just want it to be safe.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lang, for being here. I'm going to take us back 25 years, when I was on council previously. Singapore Yacht Club brought the same request to council at the time. And to Councilmember Anderson's point about who would oppose this, who opposed it were the users of the water. And if I remember correctly, what came down was that, I don't remember if the, at the time, village of Douglas was not in support of it. I don't recall that, no. But what I do recall is a number of people saying, who is this going to benefit most? And the concern was, at the time, was that if the lake, big lake is rough, that's when a lot of people use the space here. You can also go up to Silver Lake, when the water's high enough, which it currently is. We had many, many discussions, we got feedback from the yacht clubs, we got feedback from the users. And it turned out that what the, what the community said was, that's a benefit to have a no way, or to have a wake zone out there for all the people that want to use it. And the point was, is that the yacht club was the lesser of the two. And again, I'm just speaking from memory here. There was a lot of discussion around it and the city decided not to move forward with it for some of the reasons and what our citizens and the boaters told us. The other thing that I think is important to remember is that you mentioned safety. I'd love to see a report from Alleghen County Sheriff's Department about any property damage reports as a result from high wakes or personal injuries. Be curious, because your point.
Mine.
Because your point's well made, there may, there may, may very well have been some personal injuries as a result of some of the actions you've described. Love to see some of the reports on that to see what they've actually experienced. The other thing to that, and I don't know if we talked about this previously, is what's the option of having a speed limit? I think a complete no wake zone to the lake, from my position, is probably going to be a non-starter for most of the community and the boaters. But a speed limit, because boats have changed over the past 25 years, are far more powerful. The ways in which people enjoy boats, you know, pulling the, you know, things behind the boats are different. A speed limit might be something worth discussing and that's something that can be enforced by the, by the marine unit. So I think we need to look at alternatives to just simply a no wake zone across the board. I think that would be difficult based, and I don't know if the issues have changed appreciably since 25 years ago when we talked about. We had a lot of discussion on this.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think what you need to do is go up the lake, look at areas that have a similar size waterfront and what they're doing. And it's no wake. Now, if you're going to say there's going to have to be a speed limit.
So we're just opening up.
Speed limit going to do.
Right, well, and now that we're going back to this one, and now that I, in fact, I brought this up, one of the issues that came up back then was the installation of seawalls, which has essentially created a bathtub, which the waves bounce back and forth and it just, as it builds, it just creates this like going through the channel in your boat, right? So that was an issue back then too, is because the seawalls have prevented the waves from being able to disperse on the shore. So there's a lot of different factors involved here, making a decision about.
I think we're getting too far down the rabbit hole of this. Like right now, what we want to talk about is, do we want to have further discussion on it? It looks like we do. Next steps are to contact Douglas, the other stakeholders, see what the appetite is and then move forward from that.
That sounds great.
Before we get into no wake versus, yeah, my answer is right now. But thank you for your time and coming up to see us.
Okay, we will move on to our next discussion item. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I'd like to be involved as, okay, we're here today.
Yeah.
Next time there's another, whatever it's going to be.
Well, yeah, we got to talk to Douglas. Yeah.
So the great part is, we're all in agreement that we want to continue.
Job like this.
Yeah.
And we know there's, there's so many issues that have to be confronted in order to decide how we want to do.
Right, but thank you for bringing it to us. We really appreciate it. Yep, we will absolutely keep you posted.
Yeah, make sure you subscribe to our emails on our website and so that you're getting our agendas all the time. They email them to you every time, uh, before our meetings and our workshops as well. You get the whole schedule there. But you can go to our website, um, and, and enter your email to be on our mailing list and that's how we all get this information. Pardon?
Yeah, yeah, you can subscribe to it.
Do you have that?
Yes, yes. You can subscribe to it.
Subscribe to our email, our, our, to our emails by going.
We'll send it, we'll send it to you in your email.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Lang.
Thank you so much.
So much.
All right, we're going to move on to discussion item six D, the updated rate proposal from Republic Services, Ryan. What page are we on for that? Thank you. Thanks, Jamie. Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so, uh, uh, earlier, a couple of meetings ago, we, uh, kind of brought forth the, uh, the rate proposal from Republic to extend their existing agreement for another five years. You know, we discussed the, the proposal, the, the increases that they were also going to increase recycling pickup. You, as a council, asked that, uh, we, uh, work on trying to reduce the number of years of the agreements, uh, with the discussion that maybe there's some future, um, joint, uh, you know, bidding opportunities, uh, and then, uh, also had a discussion about the, uh, their proposed increase was six percent per year. And you added interest in having that tied to, uh, the Consumer Price Index. So went back to, uh, Republic, um, with that request. They've come back, uh, with a, a four-year extension indicating that, uh, if it's less than that and the, the numbers, uh, rate, rate proposal will change. Uh, and that they are willing to, uh, tie the increases to the Consumer Price Index specific to water, sewer and trash. But, uh, have increases be no less than four and a half percent, uh, per year. So, um, some movement there, uh, which was a positive, I think. They also, uh, provided their, uh, proposed extension agreement. Um, I, I took a look at it extensively, um, this week and, and then, uh, I sent it over and Chris Patterson took a look at it as well. We had a number of proposed changes that were, uh, sent back to them today that they sent on to their legal counsel. So, um, probably going to take a little bit to get, maybe get some further feedback on that. We're kind of up against a, a deadline here in the sense that our current agreement expires at the end of the month. Um, so, uh, but, you know, maybe I get a quick response from them tomorrow. Uh, if not, um, I, I think we, we maybe will, will, we'll, we'll draft some sort of, uh, this brief extension of the current agreement to cover us while we're working through some of the, the last minute, uh, pieces here and any other items that, that you may be concerned with that to review. I know there was some questions about, uh, that Councilmember Muncie received and, and you mayor received and I received, uh, related to the, uh, the smaller thirty-two gallon carts. So Republic's indicating that they're not, um, uh, providing those or offering those as an option anymore. They are willing to continue servicing those for those that have them and pick them up, but that the, the rate would be the same as they're offering for, uh, the normal ninety-six gallon.
Any questions?
Yeah, the only question I would, and, and thank you for, um, getting some of our terms. Um, the CPI, I'm still stuck on that. Uh, we should have a better definition. It should be the market basket CPI specifically.
The Watchman?
The market basket CPI.
Okay.
There's different, there's seven of them.
Yeah.
And that would be the one I would suggest we use. Number two is the fact that they're going to say it can't be anything less than four point five percent. We wanted, I don't know, I'm not comfortable with, I'm not, because so basically you may as well just go back and say, okay, four, four, four point five percent a year as opposed to six percent previously. I mean, I don't predict interest rates, but I, I just don't think it's, I don't know, still a little bit troubled by that. So, but.
Honestly, it seems kind of like a smart aleck move.
Yeah, it does.
To make it. CPI, but only if it's actually going to increase our rate.
Right, should be just tied to CPI, period.
Yeah, I, I, it, it could be. And this is what their, their offer is, obviously they're, they're taking into account. Yeah, I, I don't know that they're going to budge. I don't see them budging a whole lot on, on this at this point. Um, considering the, the markets and the next highest bidder that Douglas recently received, I think those are other factors here that, um, unfortunately, you know, uh, we're up against, um, trust pad.
Correct.
Absolute, you know, uh, you know, we all want, that's the idea. I get, totally get that.
So the, the prize is what people have been asking for as long as I've been here, which is to increase recycling.
Yeah.
So this doubles recycling. And let me, tell me if I got the numbers right with this twenty-eight percent. I mean, so is it basically like, if you're willing to pay as a resident, you know, another five dollars and eighty cents a month, you'll get twice as, twice the recycling. Is that basically right? But I. So there's that, but I'm assuming they wouldn't give us the same rate again anyway, right?
Yeah, I agree with that because their, their last set of increases was for five years, was only at three percent a year. So from their perspective, they've lost on that deal because inflation was much higher. And so they're trying to make up some of that. Plus, obviously we had the increase in service, so.
A lot of people like me are going to save money on this because I can get rid of my extra recycle bin that I have to pay.
Right.
Another, I think I paid another twenty bucks a month for two recycle bins because I can't stomach throwing that in the trash.
Yeah, where I'm, where I'm, yeah, where I'm going is trying to make this easier for our residents to understand. It's like, so basically, you know, let's just say that it was going to go up to eighteen or seventeen a month. So it was going to go up three bucks. So then what's the delta between three bucks and twenty bucks? So, you know, I mean, and I don't know how the numbers would, would have, what they would have come back with is like, you want to renegotiate for exactly what you got? You get this, you know, and so it'd be nice to be able to, at the end of the day, if we do this, to tell, to explain to the residents when this comes out that, you know, for an extra three bucks or five, four bucks or five bucks, whatever it is, you're going to, you're going to get your recycling doubled. I think that it's.
I think people are willing.
Then people are like, heck yeah. So, you know, I'm paying, you know, another fifty bucks a year to double my recycling.
Right.
Then I think it's, it's, you know, it's sort of a no-brainer.
And like you said, you're, like, there's a lot of people that would end up getting rid of a second.
Exactly.
You know?
I, I, once again, it's just, it'd be nice to be able to put it into a real good, you know, twenty-eight percent sounds like shocking.
Yeah.
But when you think about that it's going to go up anyway and you're getting an extra pickup a month for your recycling, which is huge. You know, then I think it's, it's much more palatable to the, to the residents if they understand it in those terms.
I agree. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you for your negotiating. Appreciate all your work on it, Ryan. All right. So we're going to move on to item six E benches for Village Square Park Playground. Yeah.
Yays, that's a positive sign.
Finally, finally, yes.
All right, yeah. So the, you know, the, the previous playground, I, I think it was three benches. And, uh, so the, you know, the updated playground plans didn't, didn't have specific spots, you know, laid out, uh, for, for benches. Uh, we've, we've been able to, to, you know, take a look at how it went throughout the summer. Obviously, there's certainly a desire for them, a lot of requests for them. So, uh, Scott Herbert, uh, uh, kind of took a look at what he thought was the, the, the best approach as far as how many there should be and where they should be located. And, um, so before you is kind of his, uh, proposal, uh, for benches. Uh, I understand that the measurements on the west side are going to be a little bit, uh, different. We're going to update those before they're, they're brought to the, uh, the Historic District Commission, but largely they'll, they'll be in, you know, general location. So just wanted to make sure that, uh, the council is aware and, and agreeable to, uh, the plan before we head to, uh, the Historic District Commission to, uh, seek their approval.
Go ahead.
Is there an opportunity for folks to donate for these benches? Have, have we heard a little bit about that in the background?
Yeah, so there, there is, but we do have some stock already at, at the Department of Public Works. I think we have these five plus some maybe even. So, um, so we have them ready to go. So we, um, but Scott was talking with folks who are interested in donating to, to have them, you know, added to a list, to make sure that as we have future needs, uh, we'll reach out to them to, uh, uh, to donate if they're so interested.
Okay. Um, oh, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just more of a process question. Thank you, Mayor. You know, in, in past experience, this is something that, again, it seems a little bit procedural to me. This should have just been a simple decision by the city manager, say, put the benches back, get DPW to get it done and off we go. I don't think there's going to be any, but there's no opposition from council, I don't think, on this and from the community. You know, in my mind, it should have just been a simple, hey, we're ready, put the benches back in, off we go. Hey, the benches are back, wonderful. To have to take it through different committees and so forth, just seems a little, I don't know.
What I'm thinking about though is, is for us to be sort of consistent and walk the, walk the walk, um, if you will. I mean, we just went through this huge thing with Wicks Park about what they were going to put their benches on. And we basically said no to a concrete pad. It looks like that's what we're going to do right here.
Oh, good point.
You know, I mean, you know, I, I, I wasn't just, you know, freestyling. When I said I really would like to see us do a better job of capturing rainwater and, and runoff and stuff like that. And, you know, if, if, if we expect that of one of our businesses, you know.
These concrete pads are going to be on grass. So there's, if, if there is runoff from the concrete pad, it's going to be absorbed in the grass. Not like at Wicks Park when you put the concrete on there. It's, it's an entire spot falling straight down.
And right here, you got the park there, you've got the grass.
It's a different situation and it's five by eight.
It might not be a different situation in somebody's.
It's, it, it's good to point that out though.
Yeah, so just be prepared.
But you're right, with the grass around it, it's just a different situation.
Yeah.
Just be prepared for.
It's fine.
That kind of reaction.
And related to like, you know, the, the board approval process. So the Historic District Ordinance is extremely broad in that it applies to public spaces. It applies to objects, applies to features, which is what the playground equipment fell under and needed their approval. And so this is a change to that area that, you know, frankly, from my perspective, needs their approval and we want to make sure and, and cover that base. So.
Yep.
Does Scott like to also anchor these things, like chain them down or, I mean, does he, I mean, he does that at Oval Beach. I don't know if.
I think they're just bolted into the cement.
Oh, so these, these picnic tables, we bolted in.
They're not picnic tables or benches.
Benches.
Sorry, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, they would be bolted into the cement. They're not going anywhere.
I don't know why I went picnic table. Sorry, guys.
Yeah.
Do we have any ever sticky picnic table? I didn't think those were, but I was wondering, do we have any picnic tables there at, at the moment?
We don't.
I know we have in the past, stopping on.
I know Scott gave that some thought, but, uh, came forward with this.
Because the footprint's so much bigger, maybe there's not really a lot of room for, you know, to spread out.
Yeah. Now, now that I understand these are benches, that my concern is no longer an issue. It's a completely different thing.
Okay.
And that one, as you walk in, that great part, that's the minibar, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if this is, if this is where Scott thought these were the best options, um, was, was there any thought on the west side where there's actually more shade? I'm only asking because there's more shade over there. And, yeah.
Yeah, I can ask him.
Shade on that side.
That's right.
And, you know.
Is there thought about putting two of them on the, yeah, good point.
Is there any way to get any on the west side where there's shade? I mean, I don't want to mess up any, uh, tree roots or anything like that, but is there an opportunity?
Yeah, I think to the north of the canoe piece might be difficult, um, but perhaps south of it. I can ask them to take a look at that.
So in the southwest corner, possibly?
Yeah, I can circle back with if the council's agreeable to that.
Are you agreeable to that, having a bench in the shade area?
Yeah.
As long as no tree roots are.
Be more aesthetic. I mean, rather than just all of them at the same spot, you know, you'd have some here and maybe some over there. It kind of spreads out the seating a little bit.
Why don't we contact the lady that was here at our meeting and asked about the statuses and ask her where she thinks they should be? I don't know if we got her name or who she was, but do you know who I'm talking about?
Oh, I remember her talking.
Yeah, I mean, why not ask someone that actually takes their kids down there and see?
Well, I take my grandkids there. So like, I could tell you, that's why I brought it up, that we might want some shade.
We just ask random people where there are lots of things to go. I mean.
Just put them in and be done with it.
It's all great. All I'm asking is if we could have some in the shade. If I'm not allowed to give my opinion, I guess I'm not allowed. But I guess I would love to have one in the shade. That's all I'm asking. Okay. Anything else? All right. Then we will move on to public comment on any item that you wish. I don't see anyone here. I don't know if I see anyone online. Uh, is there anyone online who wishes to speak during public comment?
Look at Jake's itching ass.
Yeah, Jake really wants to. Okay. No correspondence, uh, council comments. We can move to Holly.
Uh, nice job to all of the candidates at the candidate forum. Um, no, I, I, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Great.
Good, thanks.
No, I didn't, I didn't want to beat it to death, but I mean, this, this thing with the no wake zone, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it, but it's complicated. We tried to pull this off during the high water period where we had to build up the docks at the yacht club and, you know, everything was underwater. And it, it's, I just, I was really wanted that gentleman to understand that this is, it's not you come to Sagittarius Snap and it's done. It's, it's really complicated to do and it's.
Just, it's time consuming.
It involves DNR and, you know, it, it involves a lot of state entities to get it done. I mean, we, we tried hard during the, uh, during the, the high water level a few years ago. And it's, it's a big lift. Yeah, so just.
Yeah, and I'll piggyback by saying, you know, you know, I hope he has the patience and he understands the process and what we got to do. And, and, uh, and of course, I think having a discussion is a great idea.
Sure.
Um, on another note, uh, Singapore Room is back open. They had a great week last week. Uh, they got so busy, they ran out of food. And where Traverse Rosy used to be and, uh, the, uh, uh, building that Cynthia McKean's son, John McKean Building, behind the, uh, uh, Mexican restaurant. And they're open today. Uh, they'll, in fact, they opened twenty-five minutes ago. I might be headed there. And, uh, but, uh, but they've done a great job and, uh, just want to give them the best of luck as one of our new businesses here in downtown.
Okay.
Greg and I have been sharing a microphone for a year. Greg doesn't need one. But just.
It sounds like those are in the works.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we talked about technology and I think we've approved that. And then are, have we, are we going to get tablets as well? So we don't have to haul our computers. Have we, we did talk about that. Was that, did we approve that at one point?
The tablets or the microphone?
Yeah, the tablets.
The tablets was, were budgeted. Um, so we haven't, uh, moved forward with purchasing anything yet. But, uh, you know, the, the zoning board of appeals actually just last week had a discussion and they're still really desiring paper and they don't want to bring their, you know. So, um, so we're, we're still having some discussions about, about that amongst.
Some of the other boards.
Yep, amongst staff.
I just want to make, I don't make sure my computer or my iPad is ready for the meeting. It would be nice, you know, to not have to bring it back and forth all the time.
Okay.
I hear you. And the microphones, uh, I know, you know, it's been on Jamie's radar. We have to, it's likely going to be over ten thousand dollars. Um, and this is, we're going to have to do, you know, regular bidding for it, uh, based on our current, uh, ordinance. So.
Logan gets a microphone, I want a chair. This thing is.
Oh, I know.
Don't you want me to have any chairs?
Yeah, you have. Sounds like grandpa. I know, when I, when I'm moving my.
If the chairs are an issue, call Mark Shirey. Seriously.
Okay. So I apologize for the delay on them, but you know, with, uh, you know, double duty for a while, uh, she's busy. But we, we just discussed it actually just, just during our one-on-one, yes, yesterday it was, so.
It's government, you know. It's a great symbol of how we're.
I know, takes time. Um, one last council comment, if I could. Uh, tomorrow, uh, we're meeting with State Representative Joey Andrews at Everyday People Cafe. A lot of the restaurant owners in town to talk about the minimum wage bill. So a lot of us will be involved in that discussion and I look forward to, um, being there. So.
And I was, I helped get that together.
Okay, great. Um, and if there's a, a motion to adjourn, we certainly can have that.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.